Good evening. What my store meeting is Monday, May 9, 2022. Six o'clock, we're in the citizens of the lives of order today to make seven building. I'll root for it and ask Mr. Truyn.
Mr. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Gayheart, here. Mrs. Ingleson? Mr. Martel?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mrs. Gray?
Here.
Mr. Scarrow?
Here.
Miss Stoltz?
Here.
Miss Stoltz, hey, oh, that's some pictures with us.
Do you have a quorum? We will continue. We'd like to note that Mr. Taylor is here. Meeting has been noticed for state statutes. Was there any community participation?
I did not receive any emails or formal requests prior to the board meeting.
Dispensive reading that and whether they had an anthology student presentation.
Well, good evening to the school board and to our amazing families who took time out of their busy schedules to be here. So once again, my name is Amy G. I am the K five director of instruction, but I also work with our gifted and talented program in the district. And this is one of our exciting enrichment projects that we offer to our students in third through eighth grade each year. Last year, unfortunately, it was on hiatus as it was hard to get thirty-three other school districts across the state together to run this program. But we have brought it back this year. This is our thirty-first publication. So this has been going longer than I have in this world. So that's really good. But I'm very excited to have some of our newest authors and illustrators here tonight to share their work. And so I'm gonna ask Mr. Truyn, he's gonna just kind of click ahead here. So some of you might be asking, well, what is this anthology project? And the anthology project is a writing and drawing activity that we introduce in grades three through eighth grade. It's an optional activity for students to participate in. And it gives them an opportunity to kind of relate to that year's theme, come up with a piece that fits that theme. And they write about how does that come together for them? And then in our district, we will pick twenty-four pieces that move on to then be judged. And thirty-three other districts do the same. So we have over six hundred and some pieces. We were able to pull together over a hundred judges in January for this. Luckily, CISA two in the Innovation Center in Whitewater gave us really large space because we did some safe distancing. And we managed to get all of the judging done. And so the students who are here tonight had their work selected to be published. And so next week, they'll receive a copy of the book. And they are some of the authors and illustrators who helped put the book together. So this is what our last publication looks like. It is published in black and white, so all of their work is also done in black and white. And so we're gonna move on to the next theme. We're gonna put you in their places. So imagine you were a third through eighth grader. Your choices when this project rose out is that you could write a poem, you could write a prose piece, a story. This year, we brought in expository writing. And I believe we have one student that did an expository piece, so a nonfiction piece. We also then have art cartoon and illustrated writing is when they may do some writing and then they may also do some artwork. And so we had two pairs that worked together to do that. And one of those pairs is with us tonight. So thanks, Mr. Truyn. So this is your assignment. If you watched this video, what would you do if you were one of the students and parents who can join in this fun? So we have you click on, oops, let's go back. Should've told you where you're at. Yep, here, go back. Okay, you click on the link. There we go. No, no problem. We may need to enlarge that. Here it is, May 2022. So I'm not gonna ask anyone to take out a piece of paper and start writing and drawing. You know, some of you may want to. But it just sort of sets this stage. This is how we open up this year's theme to all of the students. And it's important to know that it's all of the students in Southeastern Wisconsin who vote on that theme. So this year, boys and girls, just as we get to the end of the school year, a survey will come out and you'll get to vote for next year's theme. We keep that very top secret until we go list out and then pay close attention during the video. There's lots of clues in there. So our theme this year was unstoppable. And I think all of our students should deserve a round of applause with our unstoppable. I mean, I'm not gonna give you applause because you're gonna hear a lot of it next Wednesday when they come to the Urban Yacht Auditorium. See the copy of their book. Tell me what a nice discussion you planned, put it on there. So what we're gonna do next is we have the students, they're going to come and stand across from you and just share their piece with you. We'll rotate them around a little bit so that you get to see. I'm gonna have Mr. Truyn just kind of flip through the slideshow here for our families in the audience. Or we don't have someone buddied up with it to you right away. You can kind of see some of the artwork and the poetry. And if you're a person who wants to read through that later, the slideshow links so that you can enjoy all those great pieces. All right. So my friends, can you go and find your person? And yep, Faith, I'm gonna reassign you. Okay. So I'm gonna have you. Can you share what this is your layer? Okay, all right, right ahead. Yes, yeah. Guys, congratulations. While we're wrapping up our sharing, just a reminder to our families, next Wednesday is when we will be acknowledging. We had, because of some combined work, we had some duos, like our dear duo right here. We have twenty-five of our students in the district who will be receiving a copy of the book whose work has been published. So usually districts are very fortunate, fifty-five or more pieces before or. But we treat this like you're going to be published. So we edit hard, we work with the kids, they worked really hard on revisions, didn't we? Yeah. I had one student say, look what I was able to do in an hour. I said, wow, look what you're gonna be able to do in an hour and a half. We're back to the drawing board, you know? So a lot of taking feedback and making some revisions and final copies for our entry form. And so these students really put forth a lot of time and effort and they should be very proud. And this is the result of all that hard work, isn't it? So we will also have four of our high school art students that will be presenting artwork in the lobby prior to the event. They'll be up on stage talking about their career goals and things too. So we do include our high school students as well. So Jimmy Richardson will be there with her four students. So that'll be great. All right. Well, a big thank you to our families for coming in tonight. I know it's a gorgeous night out there. So we'll send you on your day and I look forward to seeing you all next week on Wednesday.
I can sing.
You're unstoppable.
So good evening, everyone. Welcome and thanks for having me tonight. My name is David Cruz and I'm one of the Elkhorn and the Fan Advisors. We've had a very active and very productive and a very successful school year. Not only from a negative cultural education standpoint, but from a national phase standpoint. And apparently we tried to do this all in one year, but obviously we're still dealing with COVID and scheduling all those things. We still need to come to you with our overnight request that we have coming up for the summer. So come to you tonight with a few items. I'll just go over them briefly. From a timeline, from a chronological standpoint, the first one is, I'm excited, is after a two-year absence is that the National FA is reconvening. A workshop called Washington Leadership Conference. And I know that when you think about life, it's filled with some moments and moments that might be kind of life-changing, things that kind of resonate with you and stick with you. In the FFA component, the FA world, this is one of those neat experiences. We have three individuals that are interested and take part in a six-day conference. Is that they break up into small community groups and they spend six weeks discovering themselves, discovering how to work with each other. But where they have BMSS on service and service-based leadership and then doing those things. And obviously, when you think about it kind of combined, when you think about the number of people that have graced the Washington DC area historically that have been about serving their country and certain people around them, it's a really powerful experience. So we're excited for that opportunity. So we'll take off on Tuesday, June 7th, then we'll come back on the 12th. On Sunday, June 12th is part of that mix. Wisconsin FA Convention is also will follow be that following week. So it's gonna be a very quick turnaround as we go through that. But that'll be in Madison. We haven't quite confirmed our exact numbers, but we'll probably take somewhere between eight to twelve students. We have some students that are earning their state FA degree. We've got finalists in proficiency awards, which are based off the students' SAE programs. We have some teams competing. So a little bit of everything is part of the mix, but that'll be in June. In July, we are looking to take a look at that. Actually, this is probably one just to kind of explore is that a little bit of a egg inspiration opportunity. The next part is that during summer months, having taken two days rather than having to drive up and drive back. It will, one will take you to Wisconsin Park Technology Days trade show. But then we'll also take up the day and we'll stop and look at a couple of different opportunities the day before on the way up. So if we're gonna drive up that part, we'll take in some other agents to review some of the different performance that are there. And then in July, we need to kind of hone in on, we were waiting, actually, when we submit this to you, we were waiting to find out if we would be able to get into George Jones College. But they are still not taking outside groups yet for that. So we need to find a different location. But in July, we will, we do a two- to three-day leadership training program for FA officer team. Because we need to make sure they kind of understand all the goals and they develop their team leadership skills and really kind of lay the groundwork for hopefully a successful next year. So again, very excited. Again, we're very fortunate. We've got a strong group of students and doing some great things. And we just wanna continue to make sure we get them those opportunities. It's a great opportunity there.
Well, per policy, you need to approve this. Any questions for Mr. Cruz?
I just wanted to confirm that you've got, you've got enough people to accompany you on the trips where there's quite a few more than just.
Yes, yep, yep. So what happened, so the, yeah, so would, like, again, nice part of having a second night teacher is that having a sergeant, that makes a very easy option for us.
Will she be going to Washington DC as well?
Yep. Well, actually, for DC, what's gonna happen is for DC is, once they are there, the National FA staff, they are, they're chaperones and stuff from point A to point B. So I am actually going to do something a little crazy is that I'm going to fly to help with them and escort them out on Tuesday. Fly back and then go back and pick them up on Sunday.
Oh, wow. Okay.
So, but yeah, because it's real scared, like during the week, because during the week is that even if we are there as advisors, we.
You don't still see them.
We might see them across the, maybe that's all it.
Wow. For the replacement for George Jones College, are you looking to keep that local?
Yes, we try to, well, one is that when we get our FA members, we get our leaders, they're also usually pretty active and busy with thirty thousand other things. So we discovered that if we can find places to stay local, it gives us a little bit more flexibility that if, you know, they need to start later on that day or whatever it is, we can be a little more flexible. So yeah, we're looking at a couple of different places, looking at East Troy, Burlington area. But again, trying to find some place that we can have that, that's that space that we can be creative and also advise.
Other questions?
I'll move to approve the FFA overnight travel request as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
So moved and seconded to approve the FFA overnight travel request as presented. Oh, is it fair to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much. I know the show's gonna be great. I'm sorry, but I'm off. That's all. It's been fantastic.
All right. Thank you all very much. Next destination of public depositories.
Yeah, this is one of the, I guess, annual action items for the board to consider our depositaries for our school district funds. The list presented to this evening, US Bank, ADVI, PMA Financial Network, which is the consulting group to the Wisconsin Investment Series co-op. So that's a co-op of school districts and technical colleges throughout the state. So it's an investment vehicle for them and then the local government investment pool. So it's the same, basically, depositaries we've had previous years.
Questions?
I meant to ask you this earlier, but what, what were the qualifications for choosing US Bank and ADVI? I mean, did, is there a reason why we chose those two?
US Bank is selected through a procurement process through the Wisconsin Investment Series co-op. To be built for the banking services based on price and services and swap agreements and all of that. So they do that every so many years. I know Chase used to be the depository bank. So we just kind of run with whatever bank that they chose to do that process.
Okay.
And we use, Crowls and Brady is the entity that kind of oversees that board and then provides legal services for the investment co-op. And all that's the being compliance with state, all relative to investments. And then ADVI has chosen because we use them typically for our cash flow.
Sure.
And that's, that's the only account we have with them.
Okay.
Questions?
I will to approve the destination of public depositaries for the 2022, 2023 school year as presented.
Second?
I'll second.
So moved and seconded to approve the destination of public depositaries for the 2022, 2023 school year as presented. A little call, please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingleson?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Miss Stoltz?
Yes.
CISA two delegate. Art was done up for a number of years. All right, we do need to appoint.
I would to appoint Barb Fisher as a CISA number two delegate.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to appoint Barb Fisher as CISA two delegate. All those affairs, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes. I get paid mileage. All the way to Whitewater.
So minutes are next, regular session attached, closed session, I passed out. Questions? Comments?
The only comment I have is that under the West Side Elementary Student Presentation, her name is Leah with an H at the end, not Led. So I don't know if that needs to be corrected or, but it's a misspelling of your name.
Jody, you'll correct it. Anything else? For motion to approve that's modified.
So who?
Is there a second? Second. So moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the April 25th, 2022, regular and closed sessions for being as presented, or as modified, I'm sorry. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingleson?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Miss Stoltz?
Yes.
General and other fund bills, Mr. Truyn?
The general and other fund bills. The general and other fund bills covers checks number 146116 through 146232, wire transfers 1494 through 1505, ACH numbers 535 through 590, voided checks number 145072 and 145415. Option renovation, wire numbers 1490 and 1493 in the combined amount of $1,018,738.36. And then there was a memo providing some additional information on several of the bills and board.
I don't know if you would know this, but the 30 units pit bones patrol unit to the virtual reality kit, I'm assuming that's kind of what they came in and demonstrated one time where you could go to a national park and those kinds of things.
Correct.
Which that was really interesting.
Yeah.
So not the video game thing, but educational.
Education, there's a whole bunch of variety of options out there in terms of those education videos.
Was this replacing units or was this adding to what we might?
I think this was adding to.
Okay.
Just looking at the numbers, that CCA participation, what does that all entail?
I mean. There's a reimbursement for students studying actually on the project. For the U. Bill, is that what?
No, no, no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That real big number on there? Or the tuition? I don't know, it says CCA participation. And is that like an overall expenditure for everything that's going on?
I think that's like the tuition and stuff.
Yeah, that's, that's half of our share of the cost of the program.
Right, yeah, right. We pay it twice a year.
We pay it twice a year. The other district who participates is Williams State School District. And it's on a first duty basis in terms of cost. So the cost for the program is about $900,000 for this year, the CCA program. So that's part of a co-op and if we run that through, it's called our Fund 90. And you may recall years ago, we had, you know, other districts involved with the program.
You know, what I was wondering, if that was part of that grant, is that all the expenditures for staffing and benefits and all that? I mean, because when you look at the number, it's just like.
Yeah, yeah, that would not include the grant. Okay. So that would be just the cost for running the regular program. The grant is funded separately. And some of the staff that work in the grant is funded through the grant.
Because further down, there's the Gateway Technical College lease.
That's for the bill.
So that's for the bill in itself. And I saw that in addition to that other number, it was like, whoa, how does that all work in?
And that's, and that's for half of the cost for the year. So in a sense, we're, we're charging ourselves and then we'll get reimbursed through that. So we just run the payment, the district share as a check, so that runs through our school board approval process.
Right, and you have to take the trail.
Correct.
Right.
Yep.
So that is taking care of all the staffing and, okay, yeah. Okay, that's, I just wanted to give us like, wow. Because if that was incurred in the other part of our budget too, it's like, wow. Either way, it's a big number.
Yeah, well, actually, it is. It's just called a near fund transfer. But it's funded in our operating budget, you know, and then we have to come forward.
Okay.
You know, it always seems odd to already shut yourself. You've got it at the town, but again, follow that.
It's a large number and then.
Yeah, no matter what, you're following that.
Yeah, and I don't have the number in front of me, but Bill, what was the, you said the annual budget runs about $900,000? This is case in fact. Yeah. To give you an idea, though, we're educating close to 150 students. Our revenue limit per pupil is just over 10,000. About half of those students are open enrolled. So of that total budget, the open enrollment's roughly covering $650,000 in revenue. So then the, you know, for our portion of our students, the amount that CCA costs is significantly less than the actual revenue limit that we get for those students. If you figure 10,000 per pupil, which the revenue limit's slightly more than that. But just for the 75 students that are residents of Elkhorn, times 10,000, that would be $750,000 for the year. So it's, it operates at a very efficient level compared to the revenue that we bring in for the students.
On, on, your card, there's a lot of conference travels, is that for the? Avid. Avid.
Yeah, the Avid Summer Conference, we, last year's got canceled or postponed. So the budget amount that we had for last year's summer Avid Training will take place in June. And then we have another summer session, which will be on the, the following year's budget, which is in July.
Sounds good, that's what I assumed.
Other questions?
I move to approve the general and other fund bills of May 9th, 2022. Check numbers 146116 to 146232, wire numbers 1494 to 1505, ACH numbers 535 to 590, voided check numbers 145072 and 145415, and options renovation project wire numbers 1490 and 1493 in the combined amount of $1,018,738.39 as presented.
Is there a second? So moved and seconded to approve the general and other fund bills of May 9th, 2022. Checks numbers 146116 to 146232, wire numbers 1494 to 1505, ACH number, check number, or ACH numbers 535 to 590, voided check numbers 145072 and 145415. An option renovation project wire numbers 1490 and 1493 in the combined amount of $1,018,738.39 as presented.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhard?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingasol?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. Aldano?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Miss Stolz?
Yes.
Important discussion item, student report.
Yeah, I'll take it. All right. So at high school this week, the jazz and local jazz students toured the elementary schools to share their love of music with the other students. And I think they went to all three elementary schools. Yeah, sounds was really sweet. Track and field, both girls and boys, wanted to meet at Watpee. We were at the Alzheimer, I'm not saying invite, and it was a really, really good meet everyone. And now we are an avid certified school district, which is really cool. I was on the avid panel for that, so that was amazing to see that happen for a school. Yeah, thank you. Teacher appreciation week was last week and PTO came in every day at the middle school, I think is what they said, and brought some food for them and, which is really sweet. There's a middle school showcase for the fifth graders coming up to sixth grade. And they had Hope Squad there and a lot of other groups there to just show them what middle school's like. And there are a lot of middle schoolers in the egg classroom right now. They're helping with the outdoor, outdoor classroom. That's really cool. They're helping work on that and then they'll be using it next year. At Jackson, they are having eggs hatching, which is really cool. I never did that as a kid, I've always wanted to, but I thought that was really cool. So they'll be hatching this week. The Jackson student council members finished painting the bathroom stalls and like the walls. Talked about this last time, they got the stencils from the face in town. And they had a showcase tonight as well at Jackson and they had a book fair there at the same time. At Tibbetts, they had Happy Mother's Day, they did like, so, okay. Brian Jackson, he used to go here, he now owns his own Sugar Creek Landscaping Company. Now he brought in flowers for all of the kiddos to make things for their mothers in Mother's Day, which is really cute. On Stubbs Builders in honor of National Teacher Week, went out and delivered donuts to, I think, all of the schools. Yeah, Tibbetts was only one of those, that's why I was like, oh, that's really cool. And then also they did a field trip to the Elkhorn Area High School Fieldhouse and to Mr. Cruz of the Fieldhouse, the greenhouse, Mr. Cruz, and then they planted some seeds. And West Side, they had a single denial celebration, they did like a huge picnic dinner and they had like a taco night, it was really fun. All the elementary school kids last week, Wednesday, or whoever wanted to participate, came and did a track and field night. And all of the track and field kids helped run it and showed the kids kind of what this sport is about and that they wanted to do it. And also Mrs. Cruz's kindergarten classroom had some big chicks come in. So, yeah. At Options, they had an art night, which I think this is their third year, fourth year running it. And it went really, really well. UW Water Art students come in and help and set it up. And the Options kindergarten class celebrated Mother's Day and they brought in their mothers. And they also had their spring concert on Tuesday, which was a really big success. And then college and career ready students went to Wisconsin Oven for a tour on how they make ovens. So that's cool. I don't know that happens around here. And then the Gateway Technical College also came in for their annual life after high school transition conference, which I feel like I could use one of those. So, should bring you to the high school. But, yeah, that's all I have for you guys tonight.
Director reports, Mr. John.
All right. So again, EBG, and we're going to transition now to talk about our EL program in the district. So as you know, Sarah Bosch and I each also had various programs and I'm very fortunate to work with our EL program here in the district. And it has been an exciting, busy year. So I just wanted to share with you some of those highlights. We're going to talk about some of the demographics in the district, a big shout out to our staffing. What does our program look like? What does our family program look like for our EL families? And then I have a little invitation at the end to our celebration, which we are able to bring back again this year. So, all right. So just to kind of step back and define what is an English learner? And it seems like every year we're changing the acronym here, like ESL, ELL. They've dropped one of the Ls because saying English language learner doesn't make sense. So they're English learners, you know, English is a language, so let's drop the L. So it just keeps evolving. But basically, we are talking about our students in the district where English is their second language. They speak another language at home, they have a lot more exposure to that language in those non-school surroundings. And so when they come to us here in the district, this is their second language. And that's often something to celebrate, we want them to maintain that first language. It's just they do need to learn to communicate as well in English. So sometimes those students are also referred to as limited English proficient. So you might see that LEP students as well. So just to give you an idea, at this time, we have 175 students in our EL program in the district, which is roughly 5% of our student population. Our biggest population is at Jackson School, where 13% of our students are in the EL program. Then you can see how that transitions over to the middle school at 6%, 5% are at West Side, and then 4% come at the high school. One of the things we've broken down for you this year is each year, this population changes. We receive new students to the district, we qualify new students into the EL program. So all those 4Kers coming into 5K, some of them may be identified because EL programming begins in kindergarten. We also have students who are new to the district. Sometimes they're transferring from another district already in that EL program, similar to special ed, and then they're part of our program. This is, this kind of gold column is, is very interesting this year. I would say on average, we may be welcome two passively through newcomers a year. And a newcomer is a student who is new to our country as well. So very low, limited English proficiency, requiring a lot of support. In the case that they may speak Spanish, we have a number of bilingual aides and employees that can assist. In the event that they do not speak Spanish, that just becomes a little more challenging as, as we know with an EL program, we service all languages. This year, if you take a look at that number, having 11 newcomers was, was a substantial challenge for our EL team, for our teachers across the district. But everyone has just stepped up so beautifully in order to take these learners from where they're at and move them forward. So we'll talk a little bit more as we go. Then we have students who are open enrolled and so that just kind of shifts our totals over there once again. But just to give you an idea, the high school, I mean, imagine at the high school, three newcomers. You know, that's very limited ability to read in English, to speak in English, and how do we merge them into our course offerings? So we've got a really talented team there, same with our middle school and Jackson Elementary. So, so that's been a substantial lift this year and very proud of the efforts of our team. As we continue on, you'll see that 93% of our students in the EL program do speak Spanish. Spanish is their native language, but you'll see quite a variety of languages that our students do come to us with.
I was looking a couple of them up because I'm like, I think this is, if I wasn't sure, because it's not common for us.
So, and as you see Pashco there, both at Jackson, the middle school and the high school, this is where we've worked with the Sugar Creek Lutheran Church to help resettle our Afghanistan family.
Okay.
So that's where four of our newcomers have come from this year. So we'll talk a little bit about that as we continue through. So that's been an exciting challenge. On a very positive note, it's great to see that the graduation rates of our EL students mirror the graduation rates at the high school in that last year, 100% of our students that were either in the program or had previously been in the program, you know, worked toward graduation and succeeded. Same with the previous year at 97% or that was literally what our graduation rate was. So that, you know, having the support of this program certainly helps students move towards that finish line of graduation. All right, and we know that we have very talented teachers here within this program. So many of you are aware of Sarah Faith, heads up our high school and CCA program. Ellie DeBeau this year really stepped up as we had one of our ESL teachers leave us in August. And Ellie is doing a halftime position as an EL teacher, but also still serving as a reading specialist at the middle school because she also had that life insurance ESL, English as a second language. So what's great is with the number of newcomers we've had there learning to read, we've really been able to capitalize on those skills as far as teaching newcomers reading, as well as her experience with ESL. Rosario Manriquez is here down at Jackson School. And we know her caseload is plentiful. And so then we have John Walson, John is just our jack of all trades. He is at West Side servicing West Side. He's our liaison with our students at Tibbetts. He covers our options program and also the students we have at Lakeland. So we keep him pretty good see this year. To give you a snapshot of what they do, first and foremost, it's impossible for our EL teachers to literally work with every single child. They, similar to special ed, we are leaning into that co-plan, co-serv model where we work closely with the classroom teacher, one feasible, to make the classroom teacher also aware of what are the different levels of these students? What are these students working towards with their goals? How do we modify, differentiate that curriculum? Is there vocabulary that we can be uploading so that they're more successful? So there's a lot of collaboration with teachers that's going on. But in addition to that, our EL team will work one-to-one or in small groups with our EL students. Their relationships with our families in the district are fantastic. We have to have that ongoing communication, building that trust, translating so many things on the fly, making sure that, you know, they're understanding the program we really welcome in our schools. So that's a big part of the role. And then they administer the access assessment, that's the federal assessment that we have to give to all of our EL learners in the district, they manage the program records, the individual plans for our students. Similar to an IEP, we have something in place for our English learners, exit paperwork and all of that, just on an annual basis. So they have assistants to do that. So let's roll into our EL support staff. These are all of our bilingual aides that we have. We have two at the high school. Jamila Kramer also speaks a little Pashco and can read a little Pashco. So this we found out as we got rolling with the placement of our students. So that was just a wonderful moon. Um, Carmen Cortez started as an uh, special education aide and then transferred over to our EL program. Um, so we're so happy to have her on board. At the middle school, Laura de la Vega has been there for a number of years and has just had great leadership in that program. As we've had different EL teachers in, she's really maintained that program. And then we hired a former Elkhorn um, graduate Jasmine Valdez has stepped up and she's doing a nice job there. Um, and then as we go to the elementary level, we have Dahlia Rocha and Arlette Garcia Lopez. They're here at Jackson Elementary. At Westside and at Options, we have Claudia Torres. Claudia connects virtually with some of our Options students who also need EL servicing. So we have time in her schedule to connect with them. And then Cheryl Neifeld, um, our reading specialist at Tibbetts, also helps coordinate the few EL students in their programming. But Tibbetts working with John Walsh. We also want to recognize that we have um, Linda Varelli. She is our district translator. She works closely with Sarah Bosch as well and is often here at the front desk. Um, her language skills are amazing. So she is constantly translating a lot of the messaging that goes out to the entire district. Alvinas translates when report cards are in Spanish, anything that we need or in other languages as well. But predominantly, she's translating into Spanish. Um, and then my assistant Brenda Harris really handles much of the program management um, as far as the paperwork and things we have to have on file for this program. So takes many hands to keep this program running for a hundred and seventy-five students. So thank you to all of them. They just do such a remarkable job. Um, to give you an idea of what type of funding we receive for the program, Title III funding came in this year at uh, just over twenty-one thousand dollars. Because of the number of students we have in our EL program, we are also running a bilingual, bicultural program. And so we received about um, just over thirty-three thousand dollars in federal funding for that. So those are additional reports we filed at the end of the year and that definitely assists us in covering some of our stacking needs, stack development programming, some student resources we need. And then of course, we also need to hire interpreters anytime that we need to, let's say have an IEP, conferences, those types of things. All right. All right. So legally, when we walk this program, we have to make sure that we're identifying our students. We have to provide solid educational programming and then we need transition services for when students are exiting the program. So what does that all look like? When we talk about identifying students, some of you may recall when you register your student, you have this home language survey to fill out. A lot of you don't have a lot of it to fill out. You're like, yes, we speak English. This is it. And whoop, we're on to the next task. For some of our families coming in, they do give us more information. And based on those um, answers, we may then have a follow-up conversation, a phone call, and decide that, you know what, we just need to screen this student. And then the families work with us on that screening process. Um, based on that information, then we can make a determination if that child is placed in the EL program or not. Um, when it comes to access testing for the stringer, we look at these five areas, ability to speak, listen and comprehend, read in English and write in English. And you'll see that there's like a scale one to five of proficiency. When a child reaches a combined score of a five and they can exit the program, and until then, they just kind of continue to move up. So when we do the access training, they receive a sub-score in each of those areas as well as a composite score. And that's how we can kind of track their their progress in each of those areas each year. And then that information obviously goes out to the families and we use that with our teachers. So we ID the students. We determine the level of support that's needed. Again, they'll take that access assessment. Now we're back to that kind of December, January schedule again. Um, and then they either continue in the program or they may be dismissed from the program. Instruction, again, our teachers and bilingual aides often push in and work with the students right in the classroom. Sometimes you will see that there's small group instruction. And often at uh, the high school and middle school, we really target like that study hall time, that launch assistance, so that kids who need less support still have that touch point. Um, and that someone's kind of looking and to see how are we progressing through those classes and are we giving enough support in those classes? And then the instructional aides often are pushed into the classroom as well. So providing that assistance right there. Um, you know, you'll see there's a teacher in the background there and there's, you know, Mrs. Rocha's right there at the desk working with students. All right. Um, just as all of our teachers have different curriculum and tools that they use, um, we have a set of standards um, known as the LEED standards. Basically, it's a guide that our EL teachers can use as far as what's best practice in working with our EL students. And so as they may sit down to plan, you've got like a science teacher with, okay, so here are what our standards are, our objectives for the science unit. An EL teacher might be sitting there saying, okay, so it sounds like you want them to then write a report about this. So they're going to have a science lab next to, or they're going to be doing this partner project. So how do I break that down? And what goals and instruction can I give here so that I'm moving them along with their mastery of English while they're learning science as well? What vocabulary should I preload? How can I support and on what day should I push into the classroom to give that support? Here's just an example of, you know, how we talked about skills at level one versus skills at level six for speaking. You know, where a level one student could express a personal preference, where if you're like, do you want apples or oranges? You know, they can kind of point and let you know, eventually maybe give us apples. You know, once we're exiting the program, you know, they can express an opinion and give examples and reasons to support that opinion. So it's just like, you know, think of a youngster learning how to speak. But this allows us to meet the teachers to say, well, this child is a level three. So here are the things we want them to be able to accomplish by the end of the year. So, you know, when that child's in the classroom, working in a small group with the classroom teacher, they have an idea of what those expectations are. And then um, we do a lot of goal setting with our EL students as well, looking at their access scores, talking about where their strengths are, what they might want to work on to become better with little checks like, I could work on this. I'm going to really work it on my listening. I'm going to listen more carefully because we know like that may be an area where we need to see that growth on the access assessment. So meeting one-on-one, getting the child involved in their learning process. And then when they transition out of the program, we do monitor them for two years to make sure that they're successful and still forging ahead. We can certainly loop them back in and transition them back in should we need to. That happens extremely rarely. Usually we've got a close eye on those students. You know, if we have a situation where the student's like, I'm transitioning, but can I still have that touch point in a study hall? Of course, we're going to give that touch point in the study hall. Unusually, most of our students are transitioning at that middle and high school age. But we do have a pocket of elementary students that pick up that language rather quickly as well. So we monitor them for a period of two years, really, you know, looking at their grades and progress on some standardized assessments. And then finally, um, the last thing is that parent communication. And so one of the things we jumped on right away was when we knew we had to shift to virtual learning, it was getting our EL families up to speed on all of those virtual tools and how to access things and what was okay for their children to be accessing, finding out if they needed those hotspots, things like that. And so um, increasing their savviness with technology was important as well. Um, we also assist them in getting students registered for summer school. We all know that skywork can be a very daunting program to work through. And so we'll have open houses where they can come in and we'll step by step them through all of that. So that it's always, you know, equitable access for all of our families. Um, this year, starting in February, we worked very closely with the Sugar Creek Lutheran Church. Barb Isaacson has been our main contact in just helping the Talash family settle here in um, Elkhorn, getting those students acclimated to school. We started with like a, like a half-day program. Exciting was teaching them public transportation and riding the bus home from school. And then being at their house at seven AM and now you're going to walk to the bus stop in the morning and studying class. And of course, we attempted that during daylight, they make time. So that was probably just, you know, like we were all sending it to pitch blackout and trying to explain, no, we're all getting up now. And so but we worked it out and um, the team has just been wonderful with teachers, you know, dropping off teachers, having them get on the bus with the students to understand this process, working with our amazing bus drivers. Everyone had ice out on this family and they just, you know, kind of learned how do we navigate all of this? And so um, you know, developing school um, plans for our students. Next year, we're going to have Ellie um, working with both our high school and middle school because they're at a similar reading level to move them forward for an hour a day. And um, we will have their fifth child joining us in our 4K program and then we'll have our two still at Jackson. And it's just been really exciting the way our students have welcomed them in. And all departments have worked to um, you know, just accommodate the family, introduce some different foods, working through Ellen Leisure. Uh, it's been just everyone on board to make this happen. And so it's wonderful just to see how the whole school has just, you know, lifted for this family as well. So it's been a very busy year. And so we continue with all of our family programming, but we really had a special project going here with this family. And then um, and the reason I don't support that with pictures and things like that is obviously. Yeah, we certainly cannot have those pictures for individuals. So wrapping up, um, we are going to hold our uh, celebration on June seventh this year at six o'clock over at the high school. We have fourteen students who will be exiting our program, who have scored in that range to exit. So we're going to be celebrating with them and their families, bringing that celebration back again, encouraging them to to stay fluent in both languages. This is a celebration of the fact that they are, you know, able to speak two languages very fluently. And uh, we want to celebrate their success. So we're excited to have that event back on the calendar again. Um, that's very motivating for those younger siblings. And so it'll be great to have that on the calendar. So please feel free to join us. It's on a Tuesday, but I know that's um, the week after graduation, it's going to be a busy hot time then. So. All right. So thank you for your time tonight. You're supportive of our EL program.
All right. Recommendations to the district administrator personnel?
Yeah, the personnel sheet is there. I want to thank Kathy Gordon for her service to the school district. She is um, accepted a position in a neighboring district that may have some leadership opportunity down the road and want to uh, wish her the best, as well as Grant Basely for this time as a uh, girls tennis coach. Uh, we have the appointment of Dan Milkie as a fourth grade teacher out at Tibbetts. Alyssa Pioli as a fifth grade teacher at Westside. Luke Stephan is a middle school English language arts teacher. Mackenzie Firstnow is a high school English teacher. Um, Michael Davis is a high school English teacher. And Caitlin Wegman will be transferring from a special education position to a first grade teacher out at Tibbetts. Are there any questions on any of those?
Jason, I was just a little confused um, with the Michael Davis one. So he's replacing Marie Barnhart, but she's she's staying with us?
Yeah, Marie Barnhart shifted to Lisa Anzalone's position.
Okay. Yeah, no, I understand that. I just didn't see a transfer um, for her. So. But okay, got it.
Other questions?
I move to approve the personal recommendation sheet for May ninth, twenty twenty-two, including new employment contracts, condition of passing background check and just mandated drug screening as presented.
It's been moved to second and two for the personal recommendation sheet for May ninth, twenty twenty-two, including new employment contracts, condition of passing the background check All those would be opposed? Uh, school gifts. Looks like we have three. Uh, one from the Rustic Road Riders who donated fifteen hundred dollars to the Oak Ridge High School Friendship Program. Extreme Elkhorn has donated uh, four foul holes for the softball fields at the high school valued at twenty-five hundred dollars. Diana Brown has donated over three hundred books, a bookshelf, three uh, satellite units and the two carts valued at six hundred and twenty dollars. So thank them for that. Any questions on those?
I move to approve the generous school gifts as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moved to second and two for the generous school gifts for the Rustic Road Riders, Extreme Elkhorn and Diana Brown as presented. All those would be opposed? Second reading of revised policy three forty-five dot one-one, class rank and lobby system. The only change on that was the reference. So I'm guessing there hasn't been any feedback on that.
I did not have any feedback on that.
So looking for, unless there's anything anybody wants to talk about. Always looking for a motion approved.
I move to approve the revised policy three forty-five one-one-one, class rank and lobby.
Is there a second? So moved to second and two for the revised policy three forty-five dot one-one, and class rank and the lobby system as presented. All those would be opposed?
I have a question. Why do you switch to monic like system? Okay. I mean, honestly, I understand it, but I just don't, you know, why the change?
Why did they change the speed on from fifty-five to seventy? There you go. It's it's the new now. We keep moving.
Okay. Yeah.
It's it's a long conversation.
It is. Okay. I'll I'm leaving here at some other point.
Maddie, I I would be happy to sit down and go through the historical part that I know. In short, before I came, it was voted four to three to switch to it. So. Uh, but I can uh, give you more of the why and so forth. I'd be happy to go through that with you.
Sounds good. I'll see you around the neighborhood.
Approval of the updated section twenty-two compensation system for professional staff.
This evening, the board's um, being asked to approve the revised uh, professional staff salary schedule for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Um, this draft reflects uh, increases in each of the salary figures of seventeen hundred dollars. With the step increase, which does vary between about seven hundred and ten dollars and nine hundred and fourteen dollars. The combination of those is about a twenty-five hundred dollar increase or almost a four percent adjustment on average for our professional staff from current salary.
Questions, Mr. Trump?
So in the um, later on, we have the um, the teacher contracts, those teacher contracts, do those reflect the new?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, they do.
Any other questions?
I move to approve the updated section twenty-two compensation system professional staff employee handbook as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moved in second and two for the updated section twenty-two compensation system in the professional staff employee handbook as presented.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart Epstein. Mrs. Ingusol?
Yes.
Mr. Martell?
Yes.
Strohda?
Yes.
Mrs. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
And Stoltz?
All right, now we have compensation for support staff.
The compensation proposal for support staff for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year reflects an increase in each of the hourly rates of two point five percent or two point five percent per cell. The support staff step increase is one and a half percent. So the combination of that increase along with the step represents. So the combination of that increase along with the step represents 4% on average for our support staff as well. So on a percentage, it's very similar to the professional staff. In addition, we're proposing to adjust, do a market adjustment with our computer specialists, and that's $2 an hour increase for classification one only. And that would affect our two computer specialists that we have.
No, no other market adjustments, if ever required.
You may recall, we did market adjustments during this year back in February for a couple of months.
Right.
So that already occurred.
Any questions, Mr. Trump? Are you not looking for a motion?
I move to approve the updated Section 26 Compensation System in the Support Staff Employee Handbook as presented.
Also.
So moved and seconded to approve the updated Section 26 Compensation System in the Support Staff Employee Handbook as presented.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingasol?
Yes.
Mr. Martell?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
And Stoltz?
Yes.
Teacher contracts. Per contract, our state statute, the school boards to approve contracts for teaching staff on an annual basis. The listing of our professional staff, and I believe it's 245 staff members, reflects the salary schedule that the board just approved previous this evening.
246, no, wait, there's one title.
Pardon?
246.
Yeah, I think it starts in two, so, yeah, 245.
Questions on the contracts? All right, looking for a motion.
I move to approve the 2022-2023 teacher contracts as presented.
Is there a second?
I will second it.
So moved and seconded to approve the 2022-2023 teacher contracts as presented. Roll call.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart, Epstein. Mrs. Ingasol?
Yes.
Mr. Martell?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
And Stoltz? Motion carried.
Announcements. You want to jump on that, Jason, or do we just go through the notes together?
Yeah, I can share some of those announcements. Just a reminder that next week, we have the retirement party that will start at 5:00 p.m. at the middle school. I don't know if "party" is the right word, "recognition," there we go. But there are typically cookies and punch. We'll then shift to the district office for the regular school board meeting at 6:00. We have a need for another personnel meeting. Wanted to see if May 16th at noon would work for the members of the Personnel Committee?
It does for me.
Yeah, I'll be okay.
Yeah, I believe so. All right. We'll take a march for the three committee members.
Great. And then unfortunately, it looks like we're going to be in need of an expulsion hearing. And preliminarily, I wanted to check and see if Wednesday, May 18th at 6:30 would work for the board.
I won't be available for the.
I can make it.
I'd have to change a few things, but we don't have a quarter.
There's a lot of depends. I don't know.
All right, we'll put out a do-it-all. I'll try to, it's just May is insane. And I typically schedule it on that Monday night. But with the retirement celebration before, I mean, we could always schedule it to go after the regular board meeting and just make it a lengthy night. But at May, I mean, typically, we don't have conflicts on that evening. But I'll send a doodle out. We won't utilize that night. And then the last announcement I had was there was a link there to the U.S. News and World Report. Who knew that there was a Whitewater Metro area? But we've retained our number one ranking in the Whitewater Metro area. We, and also the number one ranking in the conference. That in spite of the fact of, I'm not a huge fan of the U.S. News and World Reports in that they really only use two metrics. They use the AP, percentage of students taking the AP exam and the passing it, as well as the ACT numbers. They don't count any of our Project Lead the Way classes or transcribed credits, which we lead the state in those numbers. If those were incorporated as far as college-level classes, then we would be much higher than number 68 in Wisconsin. And ignore the graduation rate. For whatever reason, I think because of COVID, they just decided to put everyone's graduation rate at the state average of 93%. We're well above 93%, so are all the other schools in the rankings. So just wanted to share that with you and celebrate the success of the school district, which really feeds into that overall success of the high school. That was all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chetlock. Do have a closed session, so. So looking for a motion, return.
I move to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.851C to consider 2023-2022-23 wage salary adjustments for supervisors, central office, support staff, and administrators. The school board will not reconvene in open session.
Is there a second? So moved and seconded to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.851C to consider 2022-2023 wage salary adjustments for supervisors, central office, support staff, and administrators. The school board will not reconvene in open session. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingasol?
Yes.
Mr. Martell?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.